All right, the time is 6:00 PM on Monday, October 4th, 2021. At this time, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Hughes, here. Councilmember Rodriguez. I know she is going to try to join us virtually this evening. She did contact. Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Council Vice Mayor Cortez. And Mayor Walter, here. At this time, we'll go ahead and we'll begin with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
In the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic, through which its lands, one nation, under God, the individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Play more.
Go ahead and we will open our call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless those matters are properly noticed for discussion or legal action. At this time, I'm going to call forward Ms. Stephanie Joyner. Stephanie is with the Penal County Historical Museum, and I want to say welcome. Thank you for coming here this evening.
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, I'm Stephanie Joyner, the Executive Director of the Penal County Historical Museum, and I invite you and your family to PCHS Museum's Dia de los Muertos Celebration on October 31st from 12:00 to 4:00 PM. Dance to the music of mariachi blues de luna, enjoy folklorico dance, food, and special guest Zarco Guerrero, well-known performer and artist. Zarco will tell the story of Dia de los Muertos through six characters. Enjoy several hands-on activities for the entire family, including personal ofrendas or altars, mask-making, candle wrappers, rock art activity, and more. Tickets are $10 early bird, or $12 at the door for adults age 19 and older. There is no charge for children under the age of 18. Visit our website, Facebook page, or call us for early bird registration. And leading up to the Dia de los Muertos Celebration, we welcome you to join our traditional craft-making sessions throughout October. Join us on Tuesdays at the Suter House, that's 270 North Penal Street, and on Saturdays at the museum, 7:15 South Main Street, all month long from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, to learn and help make traditional Mexican flowers, masks, and candle wrappers. Decorate your own personal ofrenda at the Suter House on Tuesdays, or take one home to celebrate those who have passed, and return your ofrenda to the museum to display during the October 31st program. We hope to see you at the museum soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming this evening, and also just a reminder for everybody, the first Saturday of the month is always free, and that's when you started kicking this off with the great, like, the coloring and the new displays, so thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker for call to the public is Roger Beatty. It was written in pencil, so I really had to focus, I'm sorry.
I meant to do that, sorry. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Council, and staff. I just wanted to take the time, Roger, sorry, Roger Beatty, Florence Unified School District Governing Board. Not speaking for the board, but speaking as an individual, I just wanted to come out and thank everybody from the board, from your town, and your town staff, for the amazing event that happened this weekend. I think everybody probably knows we had a first-time barbecue festival with a competition, which was to support the Florence Foundation, or Florence Friends of the Kids First Foundation, which gives scholarships to the school, to high school seniors of the local school district. And we were able to raise, I know there's numbers going around on social media right now, but I'm not officially able to announce how much money we made, but it's pretty close to $50,000 that we made in basically a day and a quarter. And because of your town staff, which was absolutely amazing, working with and did an amazing job onsite and supporting the event, including the council and everybody's, I'm looking at everybody around, and I can't thank them all, because I think I saw most of them at the event, either working it or volunteering for it or something. So I just wanted to take this, say thank you to the town, and thank you for Florence for stepping up for this first-time event, and we look forward to doing it again next year. Thank you.
We are looking forward to that event as well next year, and thank you for everything. Is there anybody else online that would like to speak at this time, or in our audience? Seeing no such movement, I'm going to close our call to the public and move to item six, which is Presentations. Six A is a proclamation declaring October 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Proclamation, light Town Hall purple for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence is a pervasive problem that affects one in four women and one in seven men in Arizona, and stands in direct opposition to our number-one priority of protecting Arizona families and communities. And whereas in Arizona, every 36 minutes, an officer responds to a domestic violence incident with a young child present, and every 19 minutes, an arrest is made. These numbers are tragic, because domestic violence impacts our families, communities, schools, and workplaces on a daily basis. And whereas this is an issue that affects all ages, races, religions, socioeconomic backgrounds, and education levels, and ending violence in the home, at work, and in the community requires vigilance and dedication from every part of our society. We all have a responsibility to know the signs, to help the victimized and the vulnerable, and to speak out against it whenever we can. And whereas during the month of October, victim advocate group centers, service workers, and many other organizations come together to connect those who work to end violence, to celebrate those who have survived, and mourn those who have died because of domestic violence. And whereas on October 4th, 2021, Governor Ducey will light the state Capitol purple as a symbol of Arizona's dedication to ending domestic violence, and launched the month-long Lighting Arizona Purple campaign. Governor Douglas A. Ducey encourages Arizonians to stand with him as we send the unwavering message that domestic violence can stop, and invites everyone to join in this effort by lighting their homes purple. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month is an opportunity to stand with domestic violence survivors, to celebrate the progress made in combating these crimes, and to recommit to reducing domestic violence in their communities. Now therefore I, Tara Walter, Mayor of the Town of Florence, Arizona, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim and declare October 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And in support of this worthy cause, we'll have Town Hall lit purple throughout the month of October 2021, and do hereby call upon all citizens to light their homes purple in support of this effort. This is part of the Seventh Annual Lighting Arizona Purple Campaign that started with the state of Arizona. And I want to say thank you to our town staff, who made it possible for our Town Hall to be lit purple. Item number seven is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda, unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is authorization for the mayor to sign a letter to Arizona's congressional delegation urging support for Resolution Copper and opposing the language in the current version of the Budget Reconciliation Bill that would repeal the previously approved Oak Flat Withdrawal Area. Item B, Resolution Number 1800-21. This is Discussion Approval Disapproval of a Resolution of the Town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, authorizing the submission of an application to the Arizona State Parks Off-Highway Vehicle Supplemental Grant Program and the signing of the project agreement to complete the post-in Butte Preserve Fence Project. And item number C, Accept the Register of Demands Ending August 31st, 2021 in the amount of $1,938,412.22. Ladies and gentlemen, that is our consent agenda this evening. I see no motions to remove any items at this time. Would that we need a motion?
Make a motion that we accept consent as spoken?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item eight is our new business. A, Discussion Approval Disapproval, to authorize the town to enter into a cooperative contract with Ellison Mills Contracting LLC, utilizing the contract for cooperative use of Pima County AZ Contract Number MAPO 2235, wastewater conveyance system and related facilities repair, rehabilitation, and construction job services, job order contracting for realignment of existing utilities at two roadway crossings for the new construction for the San Carlos Irrigation and Drainage District in an amount not to exceed $288,210.93. Mr. Chris Salas.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. The town staff has been working with San Carlos Irrigation Drainage District for approximately 24 months, just just right before the pandemic hit on this project. San Carlos Irrigation Drainage District is doing a relining of the existing canals. They are redoing facilities, widening, adding concrete to the bottom. As part of that, they are also doing a certain amount of realigning, and it requires us to relocate our utilities. It was determined based on a prior rights that the town is responsible financially to pay for those utility relocations, as it is always when the prior rights is with the permittee, the permitter. So the town is within their easement, and so we have to pay for those utilities to be relocated. This is a time-sensitive project. San Carlos is actually, their contractor is already doing work in the area, and they're waiting on us to perform our work. We utilize the Pima contract, which has cooperative language, to perform this work, and it includes Davis Bacon wages in this project for an amount of, again, $262,009.94 plus a contingency. So the total amount was the $288,210.93. Are there any questions?
Yes, where are these located, Chris?
I'm sorry, where is?
Madam Anderson, go ahead. Councilmember Anderson asked, where are they located?
The contractor?
No, these crossings.
I believe they are on Butte, and they are south of town, sir. They're south of town. So they're not in any urbanized areas, and there should not be a major impacted traffic.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other council members that have questions? Councilmember Mendoza.
Yeah, I had, there's quite a bit of paperwork here. For Pima County, I don't understand why this is in our book. I looked at quite a bit of it, and I didn't see anything. I couldn't find out a location what pertained to Florence on here, so I don't know why we even have this paperwork in here. I know that we're going under their contract, but there's no information of what work we're doing. Aside from
The RCA. You're correct, sir. I mean, that might be a question more for Cliff or Lisa as it regards to why we include the entire cooperative contract, but it's been that way everywhere I've worked, the underlying contract. Unfortunately, this one was very, very large, and I am aware it was, I looked through all of it well today, and it is, it is very large.
And just to follow up on that, if council would rather me have the contract available in the council's office for view prior to the meeting and not submit it as part of the total package, I would be happy to do that. It's all about making sure that you have the documentations available to view. We're trying to make sure that you have all documentation. And at one point, we were asked to see the solicitations, so we have included them since that point. The solicitation, the contract that we are using as part of, as well as the Town of Florence information.
I think it's fair to include everything. It gives, you know, everybody the information and the background that's needed of the contract. However, I feel that Councilmember Mendoza's question specifically was some background into exactly how this project is going to impact Florence and our community. Could you please explain that?
I'm sorry, I was not the project manager of this design, so I'm not exactly positive how to explain where the crossings are. I know they're along, again, southern part of town where the Skid Canal comes through. One of them is along Butte, and the other one, I think, is, would be nondescript without a map, because it's not under a road. It's just, it's a crossing of the utility where the canal runs, and we're along that area there. But one of them is where there's going to be, where Skid crosses Butte, that is the location where we're going to be eventually redoing that box cover that council's been briefed on in the past, on the ongoing negotiations with Penal County, Town of Florence, Eloy Coolidge, and the San Carlos Irrigation and Drainage District.
Did that help clarify, Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes, thank you.
Vice Mayor Cortez?
I guess for me, it didn't help clarify, because you may not be the project manager, but this is going to be somewhat under your supervision, correct? So I guess for me, I get that we have all of the other, the extra, but we should at least have as much detail from them as to what they're going to be doing in our town and where it'll be located, because that's the part that's missing for us, is that part. So maybe next time, if you could just make sure that they include that, so that we have a better idea of, and then you're not trying to figure it out and try to explain to us with no tools to help you explain it to us, because they didn't provide those for you.
Well, I guess the first mistake on my part is clearly not including a map, and that has been asked by council several times. So I own that one. There should have been a map in here. It's an oversight on my part. It's my responsibility. I completely agree.
It's okay, just next time, if we could just have more information for what our town is going to be doing versus Pima, or whoever.
I will make sure to get something out to the council tomorrow on the exact area, and then I'm assuming that we'll be posting this on the web to let anyone know as far as future impacts to traffic control.
All right, well, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from council? With that, we need a motion.
I motion that we approve, authorize the town to enter into a cooperative contract with Ellison Mills Contracting LLC, utilizing the contract for cooperative use of Pima County AZ Contract Number MAPO 22035, wastewater conveyance system and related facilities repair in an amount not to exceed $288,210.93.
Second. Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item B, Discussion Approval Disapproval, to authorize the town to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County for the exchange of services in order to perform routine or emergency roadway maintenance services, as well as utilizing shared resources in an amount not to exceed $250,000. Mr. Salas.
This item is with Maricopa County Department of Transportation. We are going to be working on something. We just met with Penal County on this last Thursday. We're going to be working with a similar agreement. We have some agreements with Penal County, but they're dated, and they don't really match what's currently going on. This agreement essentially is to allow us to share resources, and each one will be negotiated on a task-by-task item. So for example, a few years back, I reached out to Maricopa County about what often happens in my industry is we kind of do a little bit of trading of long-lead items with bigger communities. So a traffic signal pole may be out 12 weeks, but McDot has it sitting in their yard, and we're able to get some of that equipment early, and then we just repay them with a new pole, because it's like-for-like. A new pole is a new pole is a new pole. So that would be one example of this. We may be able to utilize a traffic signal technician from Maricopa County. We might be able to utilize traffic control devices. There may be a number of things in here, but this is more of, and again, I think, from what I've been told, every community in Maricopa County has this. With the county, I think we're the only ones out of the county, out of Maricopa County that will have this. The benefit to this is in an emergency, if we need something, this agreement's already done and in place, versus the last time that we needed to do something, both us and Penal County did not have this agreement in place. And so, in fact, I wasn't even aware of this, because I'd asked to share resources in the past, and they never made this available to me. I didn't even know it existed. So when it came up this last time, I thought, this is just one more resource that allows us to have an opportunity to be successful without any cost to the town. If we were to utilize something long-term, there could be a cost. I can't, I can't speak to that exactly. I mean, if we're going to use, I don't know, some kind of, again, temporary traffic control device for three months, they're probably going to want some type of payment on that. But if we were to borrow a VMS board for four or five days, there may not be any, there may not be any cost to the town for that. And Penal County currently provides us these types of resources unofficially without payment, and we would do the same for them. It's a, it's a normal public works function to help the neighboring communities, the county that you work in, and our water department does it as well. Our water department sometimes works with the county to fix infrastructure that is quasi-private, but we do it because when we need them, they help us as well.
Council, is there any member that has a question on this agenda item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Anderson, go ahead.
I, I'm still just a little confused about what the $250,000 is for.
That language was in their agreement as it relates to a maximum capacity of utilizing this. We have no interest in doing anything large with them at all, but that's just what it was in the agreement. We don't, we don't need that kind of cap. We don't plan to use that kind of cap. Like I said, this was more for an emergency, so if we had to utilize something like traffic control devices for weeks or months, it may be 20,000, 30,000, and hopefully it's at a rate cheaper than what we could just rent it from Trafficade, or Metro Traffic, or any Bob's Barricades. So it's just an advantage to be able to do something. The same thing with the traffic signal pole. It would be just a like-for-like trade. We'd get a pole from them, we would return that pole, but there wouldn't be any cost. So that's, that's just the way the agreement was written. I didn't see a need to necessarily change it one way or the other.
Well, I just am concerned about any checks and balances that we might have, you know. Can, can somebody spend $250,000 without the council knowing about it if we approve this tonight?
Yes, and like I said, that would be the point from the standpoint of an emergency, but we would not have anything that large. I can't speak, Cliff. Would it be easy for us to modify that limit, even though it's in agreement right now?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, I mean, you could lower that cap. I, I think that, as Chris said, it doesn't sound like Chris picked that amount, but I assume it's kind of a routine amount that they put in there for smaller communities. So you have the discretion to change that amount.
Considering that we have to go to council for anything over $50,000, maybe that would be the logical number to utilize for this contract and keep it at $50,000. I don't see myself using anything, this is strictly for emergency, so I can't say I have a planned use for it. It's just that when the moment calls, if they have a traffic signal cabinet, if they have the same type of controller that we use, it just benefits us. But we don't necessarily have to have a large amount.
Well, I just wonder what Becky's going to, how she would come up with $250,000 for an emergency.
Well, we would have to eliminate something out of the existing budget. We don't have the ability, especially right now with expenditure limitation, to spend more than that. We would have to sit there and eliminate a project for an emergency, which is not abnormal. We've had to do it in departments in the past.
Well, I would be more comfortable with it being 50,000, and if we spend that, we can always come back in and add more to it, couldn't we? Do something like that?
Yeah, I guess that I have, I have, I have no planned use for it, so it's hard for me to tell you how much I plan to use if I don't have a planned use. I would just be thrilled to have an agreement that would allow us to utilize these resources, and I think that 50,000 would be plenty.
Mayor and council, we can either go back in, lower the amount, go back in and talk to them about that, bring it back to the next meeting, or we can do it within setting that amount and approving it underneath that direction of council.
My recommendation, because I understand it's standard for most communities to have that 250,000 amount when I had looked into the agenda item prior to the meeting. So my suggestion would be to make that change as requested from Councilmember Anderson. If there's a majority of council that agrees to that, find out if the other agreeing party agrees to that, and then bring it back in front of council.
This is not a time-sensitive item, for once, for once. So this item could easily be tabled and then brought back with an amendment, and me working with McDot on this change in it. Like I said, I just, it was a standard number, so I didn't think about necessarily changing it or how that might be impacted, so we definitely can work with that.
I would think, you know, since this is Maricopa County, we're talking about the other towns like Chandler, Mesa, Phoenix, the big cities. So I could see them going along with that. This is, this could be a major impact for us. Thank you.
All right, can I have a motion at table, please?
I make a motion that we, table item number eight B, authorizing the town to enter an intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County.
Second.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and that motion carries. Item C, Discussion Approval Disapproval, to authorize the town to approve Amendment One to the On-Call Engineering Services Agreement with Westland Resources, dated January 21st, 2020, increasing the contract price from 350,000 to 750,000. Chris Salas.
Currently, we have encumbered right at that 350,000 mark. So it does not allow us to do any additional work with Westland on these types of studies. One of our other, one of our other utility on-call does not do these types of studies at all, so it's kind of limited to only two. And we have kind of been splitting the Hazen and Sawyer stuff on the wastewater and Westland on the water side for the most part. The exciting part about this is that we have a scope of work to do a utility master plan for the Territory Square Zoning District. That will start to allow us to plan for the backbone infrastructure, what size water line, what size wastewater line, and to some degree, working with, hopefully, economic development on creating alignments of roads within there. So unrelated, but related, is that we are looking at doing some type of Is that we are looking at doing some type of traffic impact study for that area as well. Um, that will be forthcoming in, in discussions. We are also doing master planning of utilities. Um, south of two eighty seven. Which, based on all the conversations I've been involved in, that is our key economic corridor, and there's a lot of interest in that area. And first and foremost is that the town would like to prepare. We, we have it under scope. We've started the project is to um, see if it's possible to serve that area with a gravity sewer line. Rather than having a lift station. The way that our current wastewater plan is now, there will probably either have to be. A relocation of that plant, decommission of it and move it further to the west and or have lift stations. Um, we probably will be looking at updating, so it'd have been in two thousand, I think sixteen. We did a utility, a wastewater treatment plant, a south wastewater treatment plant. Um, planned expansion document. I think that what we need to look at is something a bit more comprehensive. Number one. The ultimate location based on our current town limits. On where the correct place for our wastewater plant really is, before we continue to talk about expanding it. And. I guess I should mention that all of these current subdivisions that are platted already. Do fit within our capacity of that wastewater plant. So there's any, anybody wondering like how we're gonna serve all those customers. That's already was in, in the original design as well as. It's part of our recharge plan as well. So there won't be necessarily any upgrades necessary for that. So um, we also utilize. Westland for small six, seven, eight, ten thousand dollar projects where, again, when someone comes in for economic development. The town manager has been having staff. Look at preliminary designs for and, and reports for what infrastructure will be needed. We've been doing that to incentivize people in developing, and then they return back with a design or. Or again, what's often, we've had either development agreements or letter of agreements. Where so and so either paid this much and did this improvement, or they did, again, the, the great project was. The Sun Life. Uh, building there on along two eighty seven. The town did a portion of that project. They did a portion of that project. It was a real cooperative effort. We did part of the twelve inch line. They did their twelve inch line. Within their, within their limits, but their limits were actually part of our public system. So we accepted those easements or council accepted those easements as part of a plat back in the day. So we probably already are going to utilize somewhere of, I think. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars already scoped for pu- future projects. So that's where that limit comes up and for the future years of this contract.
Thank you for that.
Just for clarification purposes. The town council entered into the original uh, on-call contract on January twenty first, two thousand and twenty. The terms of the contract do not change. The only thing that the addendum does is change the dollar amount of the contract from three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. To allow for the town to expend up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Each time that Chris uses this contract, he does have a task order that is attached to it, explaining the full need for it. And the other thing it does is it eliminates section six, period of service. Because section number three point one point three already sets the terms at not to exceed five years.
Correct, and thank you for that.
You're welcome. It's three years with two one-year extensions.
Yeah, that's, that's the maximum term is five.
Counsel, do you have any questions on this agenda item?
I always have a question.
Counsel member Anderson, go ahead.
Where's the money gonna come from? Is this gonna be, uh, if we do have to spend money? Is this gonna be an impact to the rate? Do we have to do a new rate structure or?
We are already going to be looking at rates. I'm not sure how appropriate is for me to speak about forthcoming items. But based on the future development agreements, um, as well as. Our WIFIA loans, the, the utility expansions, we're gonna be already looking at utility rates. It's, it's a little impossible for me to say that these studies will cause a rate increase. We are fitting them within this current year's budget. Um, we have money set aside for some of the projects. Um, some of them are part of the C I P. And some of them are a unknown, uh, they were an unknown expenditure as of December of. The previous year when we were creating these budgets. Um. Not to get off on too much of a tangent, but five years ago, I got out here, I stood next to this picture along here, and we went through all the, the future growth. And we were looking at some of these areas and it was this discussion of, oh, that's fifteen years out, that's, you know, twenty years out, probably, that's gonna take very long to develop. And that was the same way in the fourth year, the third year, and the second year. And then all of a sudden. Probably in the last nine months, we've had explosive uh, potential growth and myself being contacted every week. About utilities, about water service, wastewater. Um, so it is a little unforeseen. I'm not really sure. Um. If it's a bad thing, but it is kind of an unplanned expense.
Well, if I understand what the clerk just told us, these will come back a- as tasks and we'll have to approve each task separately.
Well, let me go back and say one more thing, too. So what Mr. Salas does is he budgets for engineering services. And then he, he only encumbers what he's budgeted for. So Chris, you're not saying that you're going to expend more money than what you're budgeted for. You're saying you're gonna spend it on a different consultant, correct?
Correct. Obviously, it was the same discussion we had a second ago about me and Becky's relationship. I have a hard cap. That doesn't change, but priorities change, and the town manager changes my priorities based on development patterns. But it doesn't mean that I can spend more than that. But we, we do not um, come back on a task by task item under the on-call contract. Those tasks are, are part of the, the master approval, and so we do not come back on a task by task.
They're attached to the contract as form, but, but Chris has a line item. And he cannot go over that line item amount, and he cannot encumber over that a line item amount. So this is him saying there's not another engineer that does this type of work, so he's trying to increase this engineer's work to be able to, to finish out the projects. There.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from counsel? Seeing no such movement, we need a motion.
I make a motion, we approve and authorize the town of, the town to approve amendment one. To the on-call engineering services agreement with Westland Resources dated January twenty first, twenty twenty, increasing the contract price from three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item D, discussion approval disapproval of authorizing the town manager to negotiate and enter into a master energy services agreement. With Ameresco Incorporated to provide facility upgrades across town. Mr. Benjamin Bidder.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Um, tonight, we have before you. A project that has been years and years in the making. Uh, before I even started with the town, we had. Um, employees already working on trying to find ways to enhance energy efficiency within the town organization, within our facilities. Uh, to ensure that all of the dollars that we expend, all the taxpayer dollars are being expended in an efficient way. Um, as, as you all are aware, last year, we brought before you a request with Ameresco. To go into a facility audit. Over the course of the past year, they have gone and, and conducted that facility audit. And um, have some results that we'd like to show. And uh, get the project approved if it is the desire of the council. So um. Just put that up here. So the, this method of project delivery is, is new, and it's often more complex than, than we want to make it out. Um, really, at the end of the day, Ameresco would be contracted with the town to perform energy upgrades. Some of those energy upgrades, as, as we'll get to here in a minute. Are the standard type where you're just replacing, you know, old light bulbs and putting in new L E D bulbs. Others are more like installing solar covered power and buying that power back instead of paying maybe eleven cents that we would. Through A P S, we'd be paying three or four cents per kilowatt hour through a solar purchase agreement. So all of those type of things um, are, are things that Ameresco analyzed over the course of the past year when they conducted the audit of our different facilities. Looking at each of our energy bills for each of our facilities for up to a year prior to the time when they were reviewing that, so. When they go through all that step, after they get those energy audits and those energy reports, they then conduct an engineering analysis to see how much electricity, how much energy could be saved. If new, more efficient measures were implemented. One thing that we've talked about constantly, um, a- as I've been here. Is the H V A C unit within the town hall facility. It's too hot, it's too cold. Um, it's a mixture of, you know, fifteen residential units out in the back. That is not an efficient way to cool or to heat a facility of this size. As Ameresco conducted their audit, they went through and said, well, how do we make this an efficient? Operation for the H V A C. And so they've proposed measures that would enhance that. Uh, would produce in a commercial unit and put it on the back of the facility. So that airflow is, is proper for a facility of this size. But that's the type of engineering that goes through, not just in this facility, but across our organization. And then the final element is a financial analysis, figuring out how much it will cost to do those projects and how long it would take to pay back. Uh, the, the amount that we're going to pay to get those projects done if we were to finance it just with energy savings. So that's the, the extent of the, the utility analysis that Ameresco did over the course of the past year. So now I'd like to present a few of the proposals. There are really five elements that Ameresco has, has proposed that we improve. Um, each of these are, are visible, I think, to the public. And certainly would be visible in terms of the savings that they would have for the town. The first is streetlights. Right now, particularly in the downtown area, we have a lot of the old style streetlights. They are sodium pressure. Um, they use a lot of energy. They're inconsistent in their color, so some may be really yellow or orange, and some may be a little wider when you see L E D lights. They're also hotter. They actually have a, they create heat and that's what creates the light. So by switching over to L E Ds, we actually cool down the ambient temperature in the area. And then L E D lights also present a uniform color. So that's one of the proposals that they have is, is putting in streetlights across the town. Obviously, a, a much cheaper option to run into the future as well. Um, there's interior lighting upgrades across town facilities where. They're maybe old. If you think of it, just like in, in our houses, we have incandescent bulbs. You can switch those out and put L E D bulbs in. Pays for itself rather quickly. Uh, it adds to the aesthetic and it is a pretty, pretty common that, that we do that. So. Some of that lighting would be upgraded. Obviously, H V A C, as I mentioned, for town hall as well as other facilities. Town Hall is not the only one that has um, H V A C issues. We also have. Other facilities that have systems that are at the end of their useful lives, where we expect that. They will fail within the next year or two, or that we are constantly repairing those. By replacing them now with more efficient units, we take advantage of the savings from the, the more efficient units. As well as we don't have to replace them in the future as well. And then the final two uh, measures proposed at the south wastewater treatment plant, the town council's already approved through WIFIA financing. The replacement of the coarse bubble diffusion system with a fine bubble diffusion system. Um, WIFIA has, has already provided the town with the, the finances for that. Although the, the costs have gone up since that point. And so as we looked at. How to manage um, a project of this size and the scope. To create efficiencies where that system is at its end of its useful life. And install a project that's now uh, ready to bring the, the wastewater treatment plant into the next twenty years of, of its life. Uh, this is a project that also helps save energy costs. By reducing the amount of, of uh, bubbles, I guess, or increasing the amount of little bubbles that, that digest the, the material at the plant. And then finally is solar. Uh, this would be at seven facilities across the town organization. Um, town hall, for example, would have a visible solar covered parking in front. We would add to the parking, solar covered parking at the aquatic center and the library. The wastewater treatment plant would get solar covered, um, not, not necessarily parking, because we don't have people going out there, but a solar covered array. Um, there'd be uh, solar covered parking and um, roof mounted solar at the, the public works facility. And a few other facilities across the town. The benefit for this, a- as I mentioned, is, is being able to purchase lower cost electricity for us well into the future. We can actually pre-purchase that um, electricity and then therefore lock it in at a lower rate. So. By doing that, we save money because we're buying it at a lower rate than A P S offers it to us currently, so. So let's talk a little bit about the financials. This is a huge project for the town. This is not something that uh, is, is normal for us. Um, where we, we have these large projects, but this is something that we've worked out for, uh. As I've mentioned, a few years, we've been working on these projects. The total contract amount would be six point seven million dollars and a little change. But as you can see, as, as kind of some of the bullet points on, on this screen mention, um. We start seeing savings immediately. So the first year savings, they anticipate being about three hundred thousand dollars. And that would continue throughout the life of the project. The, one of the benefits of this program is that. Ameresco would actually own the solar covered system. So across. The town, whether it's the, the solar covered parking here at town hall, whether it's at the wastewater treatment plant. All of those would be owned and maintained by Ameresco. So if something, you know, happens and there's a dust storm and those solar panels get covered with dust, aren't producing efficiently. That would be on Ameresco to maintain and to ensure that they're able to produce the electricity. That we have purchased from them or will be purchasing from them. And then at the end of that twenty-five year term that we have for the, the purchase of the solar uh, that is produced by those um, by those arrays. Uh, they would still own the system and they, we could tell them at that point. All right, we're done, rip it out and, and take it home, or we could work with them and say, we'll purchase it for you at a very, very, very reduced price. Um, as the years go on, obviously, the, the solar panels become less and less useful. Uh, we still suspect that within twenty-five years, they're still gonna maintain eighty-five percent or so uh, production. As to what they, they do on day one. So there would still be some value there, but. Um, we'd have to negotiate at that point as to whether or not the town wants Ameresco to, to pull those or we, we retain those. And as you see, you can kind of go down and see the costs for the various elements. Um, the, the one thing that we wanted to talk about and, and this will, if, if you saw in the R C A. That's the discussion about financing, that's actually going to come more at our next, our next meeting on the eighteenth. The idea for this is to wrap it all up into a financing package with a few other um, projects that, that are, are necessary to be financed. As you all are aware, under the expenditure limitation, our budget is right up against the cap. And there are certain projects that can be excluded from that cap if they are financed. And so. The thought moving forward with, with this project and some others. Is that by going out and seeking financing, we can still get those projects done. The, the concern is obviously, hey, are we gonna go out and bond all the time? Well, unfortunately, that's the situation we're in. We have money in the bank and we'd love to be able to spend it. But we can't because of the expenditure limitation. And so um, at this point, that's, that'd be our recommendation is to seek the, the bond financing. There's also a mix of other financing sources that we're using for this, which, which makes the, the project a little complicated. And those are ARPA funds, which is effectively, effectively federal stimulus dollars. So federal dollars are coming in, grant dollars. Those we are using as well as the WIFIA financing that we discussed earlier. Those also would be included in the package. So that we're not bonding for a full six point seven million dollars. Some of those funds are dollars that we already have. That are, we're able to use because they're not included within the expenditure limitation. So just to, to give you an idea of, of what this would look like, today would be the um, approval of the contract. That the meeting on the eighteenth, that's when we would move forward with the financial approval. So that would be. Uh, Becky and her team would, will present to you on the eighteenth about going to get the bonding for this project and, and others. In October, at, at some point after the, the meeting on the eighteenth, we would execute the contract and start moving forward. Construction period would last all the way through August of twenty-two. So all of those measures, getting all of the lights switched out from the existing to the L E D, that would all happen by August of twenty-two. The existing to the LED, that would all happen by August of twenty twenty two. And then August and September of twenty twenty two would be making sure everything's fits and works and. Then they turn that over to us. So we'd anticipate the full project wrapping up by the end of summer twenty twenty two. And with that, we do have our our consultant Lenny Bird from Amaresco available. If you have questions specifically from him. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have as well.
Well, thank you for that presentation, very detailed and informative. Counsel, first, do you have any questions or comments? Vice Mayor, go ahead.
For the solar panels, if in the twenty years we decided not to use them, what happens to them? How do they dispose of solar panels?
I guess, Mayor Vice Mayor, I'd have to ask a little bit more question in terms of if we decide not to use them, what you mean by that?
Because you said at the end of the term, if we said, oh, just come get your stuff and take it away. So if we told them, come get your stuff and take it away. How do they dispose of that item? When a solar panel is no longer has any life or a customer says, I don't want it anymore because my contract's over, what happens to that solar panel?
Yeah, so obviously that would be it's it's Amaresco's property today. It'll be Amaresco's property tomorrow and at year twenty or twenty five. So Amaresco would take that down, would haul it off and likely try to recycle the parts as as best as possible. A lot of it with with the metallic parts or with copper and and the wiring inside, a lot of that can be recycled, but. That would be fully at the expense and prerogative of of Amaresco.
I just don't want to add to the landfills.
Yeah, understood.
Mayor.
Councilmember Anderson.
Same question I asked Chris. How do we pay for this? I know you said it's going to take a twenty five year payback on it. But in the meantime, where do we get the money? Like for the wastewater, you said, I think it's three million dollars, the wastewater plant. Are we are we just going to borrow that money? Is this going to affect the rates? Do we have to in increase our rates to help pay this back?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Anderson, this actually has the opposite impact. So when we looked at at this whole project and and all of our projects. One thing we we discussed was how we're going to move forward with the stimulus dollars that we've been provided from the federal government. Those dollars are restricted in terms of the the use that we can. We can do with those dollars. And one of the things that that is an allowed use is providing for water and wastewater services. So as of right now, as of today, you look in our capital improvement plan, this project is is within that capital improvement plan. And effectively, two million dollars or two point four million dollars or whatever the number is. Is listed in that capital improvement project as a cost direct to the sanitation, or sorry, not sanitation, the wastewater fund. And that wastewater fund obviously is paid for out of the rates collective from from the ratepayers. By using federal stimulus dollars as opposed to using dollars from effectively the the fund balance of the wastewater fund. We avoid that expense within the fund. And thereby reduce the the liability to the ratepayer. So. This actually has a a net positive benefit for our ratepayers. That was one of our key goals when we're when we were looking at uses for the stimulus dollars is trying to have a positive impact for our ratepayers into the future.
Thank you. Sounds good.
Councilmember Neil.
I read in the packet, I don't want to misquote it, but it was saying something about if the estimated costs. Were more than what they estimated that they would pay us. For that overestimate. Can you talk a little bit about that?
I I think you're talking about the the specific small or the fine bubble diffuser diffusion system within the wastewater treatment plant. Initially, we had budgeted, I think, two point four million dollars was the number, Chris. I don't know if if that's accurate, but I think it was two point four million dollars. When we we got into the detailed analysis, we realized that we had budgeted for the equipment, but maybe not enough for the construction and the actual installation of that equipment. And so. That's where our costs went from the two point four to, I believe it was three point six within. This project, that's where that cost difference comes from.
All right, Vice Mayor, do you have something else to add? All right, with that, we need a motion, please.
I motion, we approve the town manager to. Negotiate and enter into a master energy service agreement with Amerisco Inc. to provide facility upgrades across the town.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item E, ordinance number seven zero six two one. This is a first reading of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinau County, Arizona. By inserting seventy three eleven, be titled parking, standing, loading or unloading of commercial motor vehicles, recreational motor vehicles on Main Street. Between Butte and Ruggles Street prohibited. Adding a new section seventy three dot fourteen, trucks and trailers on residential streets. And a new section seventy three fifteen. Parking in residential driveways or private property. And establishing a penalty for seventy three fourteen and fifteen. At this time, I'll call forward Chief Walls.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, good evening. What you have before you is the police department's attempt to strengthen some of our parking ordinances. If you look at seventy three eleven, the substance of the ordinance is fine. As it talks about recreational and commercial vehicles between Ruggles and Butte on Main. But what's missing in the title is recreational vehicles. So we simply wanted to go and add that to the title to eliminate any confusion that our citizens may have in reading that code. In reference to seventy three fourteen and seventy three fifteen. We wanted to add vehicles in excess of twenty five thousand pounds. When they park on a residential streets that they can only be there. For loading and unloading. We also added in there our recreational vehicles, any recreational vehicle that is parked on a residential streets for any more than forty eight hours. Will be in violation of this code. We also added seventy three fifteen. Which talks about those same type of vehicles when you talk about the twenty five thousand pound vehicle and your recreational vehicles being parked in your driveway. This code will now limit that parking to either being in your backyard or in an area that is screened away from the public. In order to try to fix some of the issues that the police department was having with parking, we came up with these two codes. Where we currently are at, anytime we get a complaint on these type of vehicles being parked. We have to rely on our continuous forty eight hour parking code. And if you look at the writing of that code. It simply says that a vehicle must not be. Our vehicle must be moved as soon as the police department makes contact with it. So in other words, a citizen can simply move that vehicle six inches. And now we have to go ahead and start the clock ticking again. Well, with these two codes, we solidify that effort. If there is a complaint or we see these type of vehicles setting out there. The police department can go ahead and take action, whether or not that's through a citation. Or a green tag on the vehicle. Green tag is a. Sticker that we place on the window that says you have forty eight hours to go and move the vehicle. Or it will be towed. I want to go ahead and cover one other thing. And when we talk about the green sticker that we place on vehicles. That sticker is surfaced around ARS twenty eight eight seventy two. That ARS code limits us to towing a vehicle. To go ahead and summarize that a little bit, the only way, the only way that the police department can go ahead and tow a vehicle is if that vehicle is obstructing a roadway. So in other words, if an emergency vehicle cannot get passed. Or a citizen cannot get past that vehicle, that would be the only way that we can go ahead and tow that vehicle. So again, by adding. These two town codes, I think that gives us a little bit more teeth in being able to solve some of the citizens' concerns. One of the area I didn't cover is seventy three fifteen also covers selling of vehicles. Residential owners will only be able to go ahead and sell one vehicle. They won't be able to sell multiple vehicles on their properties. The only person that can go ahead and sell multiple vehicles are those that are zoned to go ahead and sell multiple vehicles. This code is also steeped in a penalty code. Meaning that if a citation or a card is issued on these vehicles. If it's not resolved within five days, that's a one hundred dollar fine. If it's still not resolved after that, it could result in a class three misdemeanor. Or five hundred dollars a day. Until the situation is rectified. And with that, I'll take questions.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
So when you talk about the recreational vehicles. Are you referring to ones that are not street legal and are only considered for off road?
No, ma'am. There is a list of vehicles in the ordinance and I'll go ahead and read those. For you. So this code, both codes would cover recreational vehicles. Those are your RVs. Buses, boats, utility, portable camping trailers, off road or haulers. Those are the vehicles that we would be looking at that are parked on the roadways.
Okay, thank you. I think I misunderstood that. So thank you for the clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any other questions or comments from counsel?
What about repeat offenders? The people consistently park a recreation vehicle, say, in their driveway?
I think, sir, that the ordinance itself or the penalty portion of the ordinance itself will go ahead and speak to anybody that wants to go ahead and be a repeat offender. We did not have these two codes. If counsel chooses to go and approve them, we didn't have any real teeth in any ordinances that we had prior to these two codes. So I think once we start putting these codes into effect, I don't believe that you'll have repeat offenders.
I I agree with you. I like the hundred dollar fine.
Councilmember Neil.
Now, you know I ride with PD all the way, chief, but Anthem is a different story from Old Town Florence. You start doing this in Old Town Florence, there's a whole bunch of old folks. And old Florence folks that got RVs and stuff parked on the street and they've been parked there for years. Use them, but they parked there for years. What about the complaints about that?
Well, and I think, Councilmember Neil, that we handle those, I think, case by case. That's what we've been doing down here now, and we've been doing that up in Anthem. We realize that there's a difference between north and south. And I think that we have to go and utilize discretion in each complaint that we get because we have rules. In place doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to be hardlining those rules in each case. I think you have to go and look at each case differently. There may be circumstances. That RVs are parked out in the roadway. There may be situations. That may exist that we need to go and look at. So I don't think that this is a hard line rule. But I do think that it gives us kind of a roadmap. To being able to go ahead and solve these complaints as we go and get them.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Just for clarification, though, this is only for Main Street between Butte and Ruggles.
No, ma'am. So seventy three eleven. Covers Main Street from Butte to Ruggles. And that simply talks about recreational vehicles and commercial vehicles being able to travel on that roadway for purposes of travel. Now, if a vehicle wants to park there. That's a permit process that go that has to go and happen, whether that's a daily permit or a yearly permit. But Main Street. Wasn't necessarily designed to go ahead and and house those bigger type vehicles. So that's what this statute is designed for. Fourteen and fifteen are totally separate, are meant to go ahead and. Address issues that happen both north and south. On the roadways.
So then on the Main Street section for the the vehicles during a special event, though, like we had this weekend. We clearly had to have RVs parked on the street. That there'll be an exception made during those times if that's part of the the special event, or are we going to not allow it at all?
No, ma'am. There is a process for an application to go ahead and come through the police department. Through the town clerk's office to go and ask for special consideration for those types of events.
Question.
Councilmember Mendoza.
I'm kind of concerned because I think it kind of conflicts with the home business. That we have, there's some home businesses, like one in particular that has a tow truck in front of his house. I know he just bought a second truck. He's allowed to have a home business. What's going to happen in the situation where he parks that truck in front of his view or his home?
Well, again, the ordinance stipulates that if those types of vehicles are on Main Street, then a permit process has to go ahead and happen. That owner could potentially go ahead and get the yearly pass. I think which ranges from about two hundred fifty dollars or can go ahead and go through town clerk's office to go and get a special. Permit, maybe not subject to those charges to go and park on the street.
Did that answer your question? Councilmember Anderson.
Well, this came up once before about downtown. To talked about what my council member here I was asking about. We talked about parking vehicles in yards that were fenced in. But you can still see the vehicles because they're chain link fences. Is that going to be allowed? If somebody parks their RV in their backyard?
Well, again, the ordinance as written now says that you can go ahead and park an RV in the backyard as long as it can't be seen.
You can see it if you have a chain link fence.
Agreed. And I would go back to what Councilmember Neil has stated. I think. Anthem is a little bit different perhaps than South Florence.
Oh, yeah.
So I think, again, Councilmember Anderson, we have to go ahead and take that on a case by case basis. I think we would also look at whether or not people are complaining. I'd also think that we would take a look at if people are complaining, going and talking to the surrounding neighbors to see what we can do to go ahead and fix that. So again, I don't want to say it's a hard in case rule. But again, it gives us some ground rules to go and operate off of.
But could we give them an annual pass, an annual permit?
Um, that's something that could be worked, but I would like to go ahead and think through some community. Relationships, some community partnerships. We could probably go and work that out amongst the police and our citizens.
That'd be good.
Mayor, members of council, I would like to say one thing is when we adopt a town code that is consistent townwide. Then the law does exist for all areas within the town. So we do need to take that into consideration as well. I know police officers do have the ability to decide when to ticket or not to ticket, but when you adopt a policy that's townwide. Then that policy is townwide, that that when you adopt an ordinance that's townwide, that ordinance is townwide.
And also, again, just for everybody out in our general public, this is the first reading. So there'll be a second reading that comes back in case there's anybody who has any questions or comments, you know, public or council after this evening.
I think I remember last time we talked about this because Councilmember Bill Hawkins was here. And so I remember talking about this and when we talked about the RVs that you can see. It was kind of like, well, if they've been parking there for ten years, we can't go tell them they can't park there. But if you go out tomorrow and buy an RV, you now have to follow this code. And then as far as Anthem, the HOA prohibits it anyways. So typically, nobody has theirs there longer than the allowed time, which isn't even forty eight hours in Anthem. I think it's twenty four.
I think you can get a four day pass or forty eight hours. I can't remember what.
Yeah, it's not very long, so. Well, it's across the board, but in Anthem, the HOA prohibits it.
Well, it was forty forty eight hours and they think that the towns. Allow seventy two hours, so they were wanting to change theirs to seventy two. So we'll have to tell them it's forty.
Yeah, tell them it's forty eight and then tell them to the the ones that park in the parking lot by the grill.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor, if I may. These ordinance were worked with both Michelle and Randy up in the HOA. They do not violate anything that they're currently doing. Both have forty eight hour zones. In terms of that parking, Sun City has a maximum for a month of 72 hours in which vehicles are able to go ahead and park on the roadway. So this ordinance strengthens on what our HOAs up in Anthem are doing.
Well, thank you very much, Chief Walls.
One other question.
Proceed.
How many permits can they get per month? Or, you know, if we allow them to park for 48 hours, can they come back and get another permit each week for 48 hours or?
From the HOA.
No, I'm talking about your new code. Are you going to allow people to get a permit each week for 48 hours?
We don't do permits. We will do, if we see a vehicle out there in violation of policy, it's stamped for 48 hours. If it's not moved within 48 hours, that's when the ticket comes.
Okay. So they could, they could park there weekly as long as they don't park more than 48 hours?
Counsel member, can you say that again, please?
That they could park there two days a week as long as they didn't exceed 48 hours each time.
No, sir. So what we would go ahead and do, and now you're starting to talk about your habitual on people. So if we were to come out and see a vehicle that's parked out on the street in violation of those 48 hours, we're going to go ahead and issue that with a little warning.
Yeah.
They're now going to get by the new penalty ordinance, you have five days to go and rectify that. They don't rectify, that's a hundred dollar fine. If it still continues after that, that could be a class three misdemeanor or $500 each day until that situation is rectified.
Okay.
The only ones that can go and issue a permit would be your HOAs. And for Parkside, they can issue up to four 48 hour permits. And then for Sun City side, they only have a maximum limit of 72 hours that you can go and park out there. Those those will have permits and they'll have to set in a window. So if we see those, we're not going to bother those unless that time has ran out.
Good. Good, thank you.
Sir.
Thank you very much. And again, this is our first reading, so this will come back before us again.
Thank you, counsel.
Moving on to item number nine, which is our manager's report. I do know that our town manager wanted to share a few words this evening. Ms. Garcia, do you have those?
He did not leave any words, but we would be remiss to let everyone know that our beloved Ben Bitter is leaving us and it today is his last day. And I just want to say as a member of the team, it has been an utmost honor to work with Mr. Bitter. Mr. Bitter does what every public servant is supposed to do. He came in, he worked with the town of Florence. He increased the level of transparency for the residents. He provided a better product and he really lifted the bar. And so we appreciate him and the time that he served with us and we will always consider him a friend of Florence. And we look forward to him someday coming back to Florence. Thank you then.
And thank you so much for your service to the town of Florence. Do you have any words that you would like to share under the manager's report?
Obviously, I would also be remiss if I didn't thank you all for your leadership, for your friendship and for your guidance over the last few years. I have learned so much working in this community. I will always have a piece of it within my heart, will carry it with me always and will always seek for the best entrance of interest of Florence, no matter where I may be. So so grateful for for the years I've had here, for those that I've worked with and worked for. It's it's been a great ride. So thank you all for your participation in that.
Thank you and best wishes, but we'll see you. You're not too far. Item number 10 is our department reports. Is there any member of our council that has questions for our department heads? Counsel member Hughes?
First one, community development. Is he on on Zoom?
Yes, he is on Zoom.
Okay.
He is on Zoom, but he is in a place to where he has very poor service right now. So any questions we have, we will respond with a written writing tomorrow.
Okay. Under the code compliance, we've talked about this section lots of times ever since I've been on. And it's, and it's, I've never gotten a defined answer when I've asked these questions of at the bottom, it says that it's been referred, there's been nine, nine different litigations that have been passed on to the town to the, to the attorney for litigation. I need to know if if these things ever get finished. They seem to kind of, it's very vague. We, you know, it that talks about you've got 17 that are, you're, they're trying to gain the compliance. There's some older ones that are going, but I never see any kind of definitive report that says what's going on with it.
I think Cliff could glean you some insight on that and I'll have our town attorney speak to that once I have his attention. So Cliff, you and I have had this conversation before and if you could share it with the whole, it'd be appreciated, sharing the same concerns when things go, when these items go to legal. If there, it's my understanding if there's progress or work is initiated and they're starting to move in that direction. And I'll let you take over our conversation from there.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. The, I can't really speak for the other, the other enforcement. I think you said 17 other enforcement matters. But at some point, some of the cases for code enforcement need in the code enforcement or the code officer, I guess we'll say, their estimation, it's not being cleaned up and it's not happening fast enough. So at that point, really, it was the first case that was started was kind of the extreme case for the Cocapelli property. And so the process with those is we prefer to have an order from the court to allow the town workers or their contractors to go on the private property because that's just good due process. So basically there are several cases that will get filed through my office. I think putting aside Cocapelli, but as far as the routine code enforcement, I think there was a round of five that were filed.
Nine.
Four.
There's nine right now on this month.
No, there are, no, there are not nine filed right now. There were, there were five that were filed in court. Four of those were resolved once the person was served and the, and the paperwork was filed. And then they get dismissed essentially once they are in compliance. There was another case, I think it was the fifth case, where actually the cleanup occurred this week. And that person, sometimes the property doesn't have a clear ownership or there's been someone who's been deceased. And so the court has to essentially feel comfortable with the notices. But as far as that property, there was a motion filed and the court ordered a warrant essentially for the town to go on and do the work on that property. There are several other cases that have been referred to my office that have not been filed yet. I can't tell you off the top of my head which addresses those are, but there are at least three or four of those that I need to file with the court. So the, those are not, those have not been disposed of.
Okay, are these reoccurring issues?
I, I, I don't think so. So far they aren't. There, there were a few properties that were, you know, because they got to the point maybe where they had been cleaned up, they, it's a chance they're reoccurring before they have a filing in the court. But I haven't seen a reoccurring for cases that are filed on the same property once they come for court orders to go clean it up. But there is a chance they're reoccurring before they get to my office.
Okay, so what I would like to have for the report for the department head is to get each one of these sections, the written notice, but via the certified. I would like a, a, a report for this entire year on, on each section, what was done, how they were closed out, how they progressed, what was the bottom line and what was the, what was, what happened at the end of the day on these? Were they, I mean, I, I want to see some things cleaned up and taken care of. This is just very vague. And downtown has been a problem with a lot of issues on code violations.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, I didn't mention also that if it ends up to the point where we get a court order and we go on with our town employees or contractors and we clean the property, then for those charges, we request that the court assess a lien against the property. So if it's ever transferred to town, can recover that money. I didn't mention that.
And, and you've told me these things many times. I just haven't ever seen any kind of conclusion. They, they just keep staying this way. So I'd like to have something. So that's what I have on that one. And then the next one is on community services. And is he online?
But is this the same where he's at limited access right now, Ms. Garcia?
No, I'm just going to remind specific questions that are on the reports can be answered, but any discussions that we're going to have on particular items should be agendized. So just, just to make certain.
Okay, what did you mean by that?
I'll explain more in the work session.
Okay. Okay, I need to know where we're at on the rodeo repairs.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember, this is Hezekiah with the Community Services Department. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Staff has been working hard on the rodeo grounds. We have a list of pre parata things that we've been working on getting cleaned up. And so they consist of the repairs to the steps on the small announcer stand, lighting repairs, cleaning up of the facility, some rodeo ground work as far as leveling the main arena and doing some weed control and cleanup around the facility. And I'm proud to say that we've been knocking out most of those items. And so we've got a project list and we're standing that list to make sure we get the project done according to what council wants to see.
So where are you at in that timeframe of finishing that, those products?
Well, we are on mark, council member, to hit the items that were laid out for the pre parata inspections that we've done with Bill Foster on site. So we're, we're going to hit those marks, which also include the lights at the facility.
You met with him today. So what timeframe did you, did you come up with on finishing? Like the cleaning up of the grounds that had been, had, had not been done from the work session?
I believe, don't quote me, but after the work session, we had gotten out there and got the grounds cleaned up. And our goal is actually to hit the end of October for a lot of these items because we've got the Queen Creek Junior Rodeo coming in at that time, council member.
Okay. And if you could give me, if you could supply council with when that's finished and the, everything that you've done.
You got it.
We could have that. Thank you.
Have any other council members that have any questions for any department reports? Seeing no moved, we'll go to our second call to the public. Is there anybody in the audience or online that would like to speak at this time? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing no such movement either in person or online, we'll go ahead and close call to the public. We'll move on to call to the council for current events only. Council member Mendoza?
I don't have anything at this time.
Counsel member Neil?
Yes. First off, I went to the barbecue this weekend. That was wonderful. I don't think I got out of bed on Sunday. It was, man, that was great. That's got to happen at least every other weekend, I think, but that was great. Also, I'd like to read something. I've talked to concerned, concerned citizens about the upkeep of properties around town. The vacant lot between some rise apartments and park apartments being a big problem. This is a place where people have been dumping trash, furnitures and other things. There's a lot of traffic through that area, has been a concern to many. I've said here at the council, I wanted to see our community do better, be better. And this will affect all of us. And I've worked with town manager Brent Billingsley and Chief Walls to put together a community cleanup of that vacant lot. And it's scheduled for October 9th, 2021 at 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM. We would appreciate community members coming out to help. Signing the register will be at the vacant lot, South San Carlos Stewart Street at 6:00 AM. I know I had a lot of the junior high and elementary where I worked. They signed up to get community service hours in the high school. And I just think that it would be a good thing to start trying to clean up around Florence. Like I say, I don't believe in telling a man what to do with his property, but also ain't no reason to be nasty and just let things go. So this Saturday, I think would be a great thing. Take all the help we can get and that's all I got.
I really like your initiative and leadership on that. Counsel member Hughes?
Nothing, thanks.
Counsel member Anderson?
Yes, I have a couple of things. First, I want to thank Ben Bitter for his service that he's given to the town. You're going to be sorely missed. Thank you so much. Other thing, I was downtown this last week and went by the Lynn Smith's building and it's, it's complete now and it is absolutely beautiful. If you haven't seen it, you need to go by and look at that. They did a great job restoring that and that's a good example of how we'd like to see other buildings downtown restored. Also, I got to go into the coffee shop. And you need to go in and they have the best coffee I've ever had anywhere. They put Starbucks to shame, really. Right? But anyway, they did, they did a great job. The other thing I'm concerned about, I think we all got a copy of a memo from the Chamber of Commerce from Roger and rather negative. And I just wonder if anybody in the town staff is addressing that Roger's complaint.
I believe that the town manager is working with the Economic Development Director as well as the Community Services Director, but I will double check that tomorrow.
Good, thank you. That's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. Vice Mayor?
So I too was invited to come see the Quinn building and it's not quite done. There's still some things that need to be done. There's still, yeah, just small, like kind of cosmetic stuff, but it is a beautiful building. She was very proud of it and it was an honor to be asked to come and look at that building. And then I went to the coffee shop and I did have a very good cup of coffee and I don't really like coffee in that manner. I'm kind of like a smoothie person. But yes, it was very, very tasty. They have done a fabulous job on that building. It looks beautiful. The staff was excited and eager to open their doors. They had a couple of little computer glitches, but they are there and they are ready to go 6:00 AM. So I suggest everybody go and get them some coffee and I think they're open till three or four, something like that. But yeah, great, great place to go and get a cup of coffee. And then Friday, Friday, yeah, Friday, I was pretty much on Main Street the entire day and got to witness Roger Beatty doing his job. And I've seen Roger work many times on other events, but this one in particular, I was very proud of Roger and I wished he was still here so he could have heard what I had to say. But Roger took this event and he made sure that it went to the best it could possibly go, considering it was the first time it had ever been done. Anything like this had ever been done with so many food people. people on the street and all the particulars of they're vendors, but they're not vendors because they're cooking for a competition, but then some of them are sampling. And so there are a lot of moving parts to this event. And Roger did a great job working with our town staff, working with the school district, with the police department and the fire department, making sure that it went off without a hitch and, and probably did very well not showing his stress level because I probably would have been pulling my hair out. Um, and then Saturday again was there all day. And just the, the comments I heard from the people that were here from California and Texas and all over the place. They all had the same thing. They didn't know much about us other than we were a prison town. And when they got here and they got on our main street, they were so impressed by our town and fell in love with it to the point where several of them are now looking at maybe opening a business on our main street or maybe looking for a home here. So I was really excited to get to talk to all those people and just um feel the love that Florence deserved that day. So it was a great event and I can't wait for the next one. Um, and it was just the kickoff for our, our next event that happens this coming weekend. And uh, I think we have the farmer's market in the morning and then junior parata, or not junior parata.
Road to Country Thunder.
I got stuck on junior parata again. Um, so I'm excited for that event. And then of course I wanted to tell Ben, who's going to get my jokes? Cause you know, most of the time it's just you that gets my jokes. So I'm going to miss you a lot. I love chatting with you and I love all the support that you have given me specifically. I know you've given me a lot of support. So I greatly appreciate it and I hope that we stay in touch.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, just one thing real quick. I just wanted also to tell Ben, thanks for all the help. Sorry, I miss you. Thank you for all the help you've given me and for stealing Julio Jones from our Falcons. I'm glad he's hurting. You guys are doing just as bad as we are. Most, best of luck to you and your future, man.
I love it. And we'll still see you at Pennell Partnerships on whichever Friday they happen to be of the month. They've been a little sporadic over the past short while. So again, in the town of Florence, we have a lot of amazing things that are happening and a lot of background and planning goes into them. So I know, you know, between our town staff, the school district, a sincere thank you for everybody who put in the hard work and efforts of the event, especially that just happened this past weekend with the barbecue. I know they're already talking about coming back next year. There's even talks about pushing it out into November and this would allow more snowbirds and public participation, some cooler weather. So that's pretty exciting. And $50,000 ish in scholarships that will go towards our local youth is just absolutely amazing. And I understand that a final number has not yet been divulged. However, still to hear the comments. And that's truly incredible and will greatly benefit the youth of our community and school district. So upcoming, we do have our Road to Country Thunder. We are in the midst of planning for our Halloween on Main Street event. Then that will move us into our junior parata. And then we'll be kicking off into the Christmas on Main Street event, starting with the parade the first Friday in December. And yes, people have already been reaching out and asking about, are we having a parade this year and what day will it be on? So I said it will always be the first Friday starting at 6:00 PM. So with that, we have so many exciting things. And I also want to communicate that sometimes good things take time. So Pastor Charles and the coffee shop that just came into our community, I've been talking with them since 2013. And we are truly blessed that they were able to find a home in our community. They have um a really strong message and desire to serve in the community. Another business just opened up as well, The Loft. So if you had not, hadn't had, had an opportunity to check them out, check them out. It's kind of like HGTV meets Main Street Florence. So there, there are a lot of great things happening and you know, that's to no, no doubt because of everybody working synergistically together. So with that, that is all I have this evening because Mr. Benjamin Bitter, I know I will see you in Maricopa as well. And I look forward to continuing to work with you and appreciate everything that you have given to Florence. With that, we are going to adjourn to a work session. And with that, I need a motion.
Motion, we adjourn to work session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.